Regular scheduled meeting of the city council to order at 7:02. Can we all rise and recite the pledge, please?
I will be agents to the leg of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Mrs. Powell, here. Mrs. Winters.
Mrs. Winters.
Here.
And Mrs. Fash, here.
I will now entertain a motion to excuse the absent member, Renee.
I will make a motion to excuse Mayor Proton, Renee.
I will second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Six zero. We'll move on to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a response. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? I don't see any in here tonight. Are there any on Zoom? Unmute yourself or raise your hand, please. Hearing no additional publics to make comments, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda that's presented. Have a change?
Yeah.
Sorry?
That's on that packet that you just tapped. If you'd like to make your mo- really make your motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions of six J, a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash zero nine, a governmental entity resolution to lease, purchase, and/or finance, with an addition of six K, a motion to make appointment, Austin Hilliard to the Downtown Development Authority, 2021 to 2024, seven D, a fire department roof, and eight C, discussion on permitting chickens in city limits. I had someone ask me about this one, too. This is the third time we've heard chickens.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Hey, any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, then. Mrs. Conley.
Yes. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. Passes six zero. Consent agenda. Does anybody like to make a motion to?
I will make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented. I just would like to make one small comment that I'm really excited that we got that grant.
Support, anybody?
I'll support.
Any discussion? All right, Mrs. Winters. We're voting on the consent. Okay, okay, sorry, I kind of, I changed it up on you, didn't I? Mrs. Powell.
Don't always listen to my coaching, but that's inappropriate.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes, six zero. Passes six zero. All right, now we're on to item seven A, motion to approve ordinance two forty-eight, an ordinance to amend Kent County Animal Control Regulatory Second Reading. Would you like to begin the discussion?
Sure.
So, animal control, this started several months ago. Sergeant Probst and I brought this to your attention quite a while ago. We've had several meetings. It's been through planning commission, public hearing, and approval at planning commission. So now it's before you for final approval. Final, final approval.
Questions, Tom?
Sir?
After it's been brought forward as a motion, I will make that motion.
I will second it.
Now, my comment. My understanding Kent County Animal Control Regulation, we cannot adopt, we cannot amend. We are adopting theirs. So the fact that we are making some changes in this as far as our animal control and so forth, how does that, or we're proposing in our animal control, how does that work in conjunction with this?
So we have to basically tear our animal ordinance apart. Wherever Kent County ordinance covered that out of ours, basically, we're following Kent County's ordinance. But then whatever's left, we had to move that to other areas of code so we could still enforce it.
I just wanted to make sure that's what has happened, so, okay. Thank you.
Delete chapter six, article one, article two. We're just moving pieces around.
For what, what is where? Our ordinance really can't be in conflict with that. It's going to be two separate. So if you're wondering why I've brought it up, we can't change what's in theirs in order for them to enforce it. It has to be as they wrote it.
I did not know that. You know, that's why I was wondering why everything was so shuffled around in there, you know? So that clears a lot of it up for me, so.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
I have a question for Sergeant Probst. Does this make life easier?
Or harder? Okay.
Is that supposed to be the reason?
Less liability. You did notice he said it makes it a lot easier for the city, if I might add. More of a headache for the county.
Well, but you now have like actual structures that you can support your action on, right? I mean, that's the
Just have different entity handling the animal.
Okay. Makes sense.
Censor, discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Ms. Winters. Mr. Jerry. Mr. Gross, yes. And I will vote yes also, so six, it passes six zero. Please say yes. Moving on to action item seven B, to approve ordinance two forty-nine and ordinance to amend. Oh, we just did that. Is that another one?
Yep.
Okay.
The regulatory ordinance, this is the zoning ordinance.
Have to approve ordinance two forty-nine and ordinance to amend Kent County Animal Control Zoning. Second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two forty-nine and ordinance to amend Kent County Animal Control Zoning.
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion on that one? No?
I had a discussion earlier with Darla. And I don't know who else, but about kennels. And if people want to have more than four dogs, they have to apply for a kennel. And I know that Mrs. Bremer's concern was that someone would have a dog kennel in the neighborhood. But our zoning won't allow that. A dog kennel has to be in a industrial zone. And there are many rules and regulations regarding that. So that couldn't happen in a residential zone.
All right, we're going to vote on this. Mr. Gross.
Mrs. Conley. Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Winters.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison votes yes. Passes six zero. Moving on to action item seven C, a motion to approve rental inspection fee increase from IMS permitting inspection and enforcement agreement.
I will make a motion to approve rental inspection fee increase from IMS permitting inspection and enforcement agreement.
I'll support that. Like to start the discussion, Mrs. Falcon?
Sure.
So I was contacted by IMS. We had a couple of meetings. Our code enforcer, Deb, was part of it and and this agreement is no longer with IMS. The prices we, they have been charging have been since 2016, the original contract. And they are saying that these fees are basically not just for the rental inspection piece of it. We don't get any of this money here at the city. This is what they use to pay their staff to administer all the rental inspections and keep up on the paperwork and certificate of occupancies. And it's quite a task. And since 2016, I agree, it's, you know, the cost of everything has gone up since 2016. So Deb, our code enforcer, actually called a couple of other entities to kind of see where the average pricing was. This is probably still on the low side, but City of Grand Rapids, of course, charges more. We're not comparable to City of Grand Rapids, in my opinion. So I fully support this increase. Allow them to cover their costs a little bit more than they've been able to.
Rental owners, have they been satisfied with their services?
I actually, I didn't email all of them, but I did email a couple landlords and asked, you know, can you just give me, you know, how is the service, you know, follow up? They had nothing but positive to say about the service that IMS provides them when it comes to the rental inspections. So that was good to hear. I said unless we ask, you know, we don't really hear what that feedback is, so.
Thank you for the legwork on that. Any other questions or discussion? All right. We have a motion, we're going to vote on it. Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Winters?
Yes.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes. Passes six zero. Action item seven D, fire department roof. Can you fill us in on this, P V's, Ms. Falcon?
So I've been talking a lot with Greg and Troy regarding the fire station. In another month or so, the fire station will have been open three years. So almost a brand new building, but three years old. And we continue to have leaks in the roof. We've called the contractor. The contractor says that's the subcontractor's problem. We've had the subcontractor come several times, tell us they've fixed it, and it continues to leak. So we said, okay, bye-bye. It was a one-year warranty on the roof. It is what it is. So we found a new company, gave us this proposal. So they are recommending the top option there, $5,865 to come in and fix, install flashing around all of the areas identified there, curbs and stacks, and repair the puncture that's in the roof. Annually, they, for a small fee, will come back, but it's not part of this tonight, but, and inspect the roof every year, which that is money worth spent if we can prevent. This company does offer that. This is a one-year warranty, I believe, isn't it? Yep. One year. I don't
I was not, not
As much as we pay for roofing nowadays, you would think that they
It feels quite reasonable. Yeah, other than it just shouldn't be doing this yet. So there's an actual hole. Is that what I read correctly?
Penetrations are done right. This is cowl together. Yeah, none of these penetrations are done right. When I saw these pictures this afternoon, I got sick, you know? I'm not a pro at metal roofing. I've done quite a few of them, but this is not done right. And it's going to leak and leak and leak.
That's the saddest looking roof I've ever seen for a three-year-old roof.
You're not a pro either.
Lot of roofs.
I sold this stuff, you know, for a couple of years. I sold metal roofing and standing seam is kind of top of the line stuff. This should have been done right. The reason you put standing seam on is to avoid maintenance in the future. You know, the stuff I sold had twenty, it was twenty-nine gauge steel, AZ fifty, had a forty-year paint and fade warranty on it. That was an exposed fastener system. This, yeah.
What is a typical warranty? Is it more than a year? I mean, that's what I couldn't believe.
They should have never signed a contract with a company that was only going to warranty it for one year. Should have never. You know, I actually called a couple builder friends of mine after I saw these photos. And one guy said he warranties his metal roof for ten years, you know? And even after that, if he gets a call, yeah.
Probably cost.
Yeah. It looks to me, based on the photos, like they probably put the roof down first because all these penetrations are right in the middle of all these panels. I think somebody went through and drilled. They didn't work this out when they were contracting this building out. So, yeah, there's going to be, I can see why the contractor's going after the sub and the sub's going after the contractor, so.
Do we have any recourse or just?
Warranty is done.
I don't know.
My question is, though, can we get somebody from the metal company, a representative, out? Because he can, he'll tell us it's not installed to manufacturing specs. You know, because every time I sold something, there's a booklet that went with it, where to put the fasteners, where to put the flashing. If he can say that it wasn't installed to manufacturing specs, there should have been, never been a warranty because it wasn't, it wasn't done right to start with. So my question is, can we get a representative out to do that? Because I, to me personally, I believe whoever put this roof on is 100% liable.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, and I kind of want to hear what they're thinking about doing for a fix because this is going to be a hard fix, a super hard fix. So, and I mean, if you're going to keep on coming out and throwing tar on it, it's going to keep leaking.
Proposal is putting supply and install flashing around all of these.
The only thing I can think of is they're going to cut the panel up just above the boot and install another piece tucking underneath and then over the boot. That's the only thing I'm thinking they're thinking of, is, you know, for sure.
I don't know. Um, that's, like I said, at this point, it's a significant problem. Um, it's in the packing. We're going to get flat mold, we're going to get them so
Absolutely.
Costs just go past the dollar.
Yeah.
As bad as it is at this point, we're going to stop the
I know, and that's where our hands are kind of tied here, you know?
And that's the thing, is it better to replace it, you know? Is it better to?
So I just know that I got into this and I said I want pictures, I want documentation, I want to know what's going on.
And thank you. Thank you for bringing us this, yeah.
And thank you for not just saying, oh, well, we'll just keep putting tar on it. I mean, I, but I mean, I appreciate that because, you know, we've had roofs that we've tried to look that way.
I, the only thing to guys, if there was a lawsuit that involved us, is the cost of the lawsuit going to be greater than a repair? So I mean, we could, we could continue to fight it or we can go ahead and fix it and make it correct. We can fight it and spend a lot on attorneys and so on and so forth and delay it. So I, I still have to fix it.
My thing is, it's like, okay, so we do this repair, they warranty it for one year. After one year, it's toast again. Now we have to pay another seven grand after three years. And to me, it's like taxpayers should not be paying seven grand every
I agree.
And if you have a warranty and it's, but it's only a year, but you started having trouble with it right away, that's already showing you that there's a problem, you know? So I don't know, what is it like Jerry says? Is it worth it or just, you know?
Some ground in between a lawsuit. And, I mean, but to follow up on what Mr. Marvel said, like, we can approve this and we, we have all these pictures in this documentation. And if the people that fix it say, like, it wasn't installed correctly, we can, in theory, like, I mean, minimally, in theory, we're also a place that if we give a bad review, that should be problematic. So one would think you could say, hey, you need to make us whole. Or we're going to tell a lot of folks that this is what you do?
And I don't want to say you have to do it, that has to be done before we, you know, accept and fix it, you know? I wouldn't think you could fix it before you, you know, while you're, while you're talking. Yeah, it needs to be done, especially if we're going to get a lot more rain. Like you said, we don't want more damage. Yeah.
Once we get to that point, then we target.
Right.
Right, exactly.
And then, just so you know that, yeah, we're not going to like skip along here. We got to take care of it.
But I do think
Continue investigating original roof contractor.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to just let it go. I would at least want to try and, you know, find a way to
And if the folks who do the repair could give us some documentation on how this was not installed correctly or was damaged in the process of, whatever their professional opinion is on exactly what it is that's not working, that would be helpful to, to like, to follow Mr. Marvel is saying to like go back to the previous folks and say, hey, here's the problem. And
What Mr. Gross said is by the time you consult attorneys.
No, I think you go consult an attorney.
Don't do that, we do, we see what we can do without
I think we go to them and
To them, yeah.
This is the problem and we're going to tell folks this is the problem.
Well, the original contractor should be, and, you know, we're not going to hire you guys again if this is what kind of work you're doing.
Not to hire you. I mean, that's the, that's, that doesn't cost an attorney.
So let's get it fixed and work on that.
Cross our fingers that it fixes it.
Yeah.
What else do we do?
Thanks for taking charge of that, Troy, I appreciate it.
Our beautiful new, our beautiful new fire station.
Chief. Welcome to being fire chief.
What should I be looking for here?
To approve hiring thermal tech to fix the roof within an amount not to exceed $5,865.
I will make a motion to hire the company Thermal Tech to repair and document the damage on the fire department fire station roof in an amount not to exceed
$865.
I have a question, Thermal Tech is the one that's local one? Okay.
I'll
Act that we can get somebody local, and it's too bad we didn't have them to begin with, but that's beside point, so.
That was your support from you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good, we got double that time. Okay, Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Winters?
Yeah.
And Ms. Atchison votes yes. Sure.
Is it possible, once they do this repair? Can we, I don't know what their inspection entails, but can we have somebody actually go up in the attic with a flashlight and look at these penetrations every year?
Well, they're in
Okay, so the rest of it is all, it's basically a steel building. So you have your insulation right there. To do that, you're actually going to have to cut the insulation to pull, to verify.
Just, I know a leak, if it's a small leak, yeah.
Is that part of what this, you said they are going to inspect? They're going to inspect their work, in other words. Yeah, okay.
All the stuff that's in the office area, we can definitely look and see, because you'll be able to see the ceiling in the bay, it's all insulated. We would have to cut sections of the insulation. And in theory, you can cut area out, pull it out, look at it, then put, you know, patches over top. It may be a good idea.
But thank you.
For keeping an eye on it.
In, in theory, if it stops leaking, that should also be a good indicator.
No. The real problem with that is when you get water in your insulation. Now it's stuck in there, it's waterlogged, and all it does is just mold, create problems. And we may find that we have to cut a hole again into it. We may have to replace that section of insulation, I don't know.
Part about small little leaks is you don't see them right away until, until all that damage is happening.
Keep going.
Yeah, this is not an easy fix.
Indeed. Okay, item eight A, sign ordinance. Yippee skippy. First reading.
Planning commission months.
A year?
Long time, yep.
At least.
Sign ordinances.
Hard to enforce.
And we tried to just make it as simple as we can. I, there's no way I can tell you all the changes that have happened. There's just too many. All I can say is I worked with the city planner and it's been to planning commission every month, like I said, for probably six months. Towards the back, we tried to make tables so it's easier for people to read what kind of sign are they proposing? And then the minimum square area, maximum height, so all the details are right there on a table. I think we're at the end of the, of a draft and it's ready for approval. Let's put it in place and see.
Run it up the flagpole and see if anybody's asleep.
Could we turn this into an action item or should we?
Read it a couple of times. Because it's an actual ordinance change.
I, I mean, I know that the planning commission has put in a lot of work on this. I, and Lisa, you were, I think even when you were on planning commission, you you all were, it's been, it's been a minute. It's been a minute.
And it always gets read, but reviewed all the time because people, things change.
Yeah, people feel different ways about different kinds of signs. That, you know, are flags okay or box sign? I mean, it's a, it's almost as contentious as parking.
At this time. I mean, don't, don't think any questions, you know, you're fine. Yeah, it's fine. And so our planning commission, our planning commission does a lot of hard work for us and goes through a lot of those things and then they present stuff to us. So if you have any questions So, if you have any questions, sometimes they've answered it, but if we can get, if we get the question, we can answer. I mean, Darla goes to both, you know, is at both meetings, so she usually has an answer for us. On the planning commission, she's our, she's our council representative.
Now, so she can help you.
Is her question also.
And she was at the meetings before she was on, so she has a lot of.
I've been to a lot of meetings.
So she has a lot of historic knowledge?
I think I went to sign meetings thirty years ago, at least, but, and like, they change. I can remember the big hubbub we had about digital signs, and like, thinking we were gonna have traffic crashes and turning into Las Vegas. And we survived. Alrighty. Yes, it was. Move on to, um, discussion item B, the Cedar Blitz gravel bike race. Scheduled for July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Now, have we done this before?
And I just got the community event application, I have not signed it and approved it yet. But why it's coming to you is the major change this year, they want to close Main Street. So, the start of the race will be on Main Street, then they pick up the trails, eighteen mile, fifty mile, there's a hundred and sixty-five mile race.
Not close Main Street, and there were like, there were like, a hundred and fifty bicycles, I, I mean, I think I remember this. And you all had to try to like, get them across in traffic?
Then to, so then when they, when they come back, um, they come west on Muskegon. One thing that is not decided yet is the complete route back. They either, they want to come all the way to Main Street and head north on Main Street to the finish line. But that would require the gas station on the corner to be closed completely the whole time. Cuz we would have to rope off Muskegon for the bikers to use the far right lane, and then turn on Main Street, come to the finish line. Nobody can get into that gas station.
Feel about that.
Marty to, and the crew, you know, the organizers, to work that out. If the gas station says no, then the second, um, route they're looking at, they would come down Muskegon. They would turn north on First Street. And then west on Beach, and then come down to the finish line. Corner would be open, like, all the businesses on the corner would be able to stay open, so. But I wanted to get your thoughts on, what do you guys think about closing Main Street, even Beach to Oak, or Muskegon to Oak, are you okay with that, just for this day, from like, nine AM? closure would start at nine thirty AM, and would propose to be back open by two thirty PM.
Either week is this on?
Saturday.
Saturday.
There's a lot of bicycles.
There's a lot.
I mean, I remember last year, thinking.
Hundred, right? Now they're proposing like, seven hundred.
And ultimately, they can do it if we don't close the street.
They can.
I mean, legally, as bicycles, they're allowed to be on the street.
Did we have any other things going on, like, in the community, that same day? Any other events?
Yes.
They want other things down at the heart of the Cedar Springs. Knowledge, there's no other big event going on that day.
My initial feeling would be, it would, just for safety, it would be good to close the street. But it's a lot, I remember seeing it last year and thinking, oh, wow. I mean, just.
The, I, with closing Main Street. The control issue for me is that we have discussed many, many times, I'm, I'm sorry, if it's my turn. Okay, uh, with the, the parking for the businesses downtown. There's gotta be some control, excuse me. Where the participants and the viewers park. So they don't take what few parking spaces there are for those businesses on the side streets. If we take that, and they allow these people to show up, park on all the side streets, the businesses have no parking whatsoever. So, uh, and I'm not sure how you'd begin to regulate that. They pay attention to it.
Like, way over here by CS Manufacturing, um, the staging area. Lot, I mean, they're identifying areas for participants to park.
That was part of my question, was Cedar Springs Manufacturing notified, and were they acceptable for them to use their parking lot? We have the extended parking somewhat across from that, at the end where the old sawmill used to be. We have a parcel that's been donated, if I understand correctly, unless something else has happened to it. There'll someday be a parking lot there on Second Street, and, uh, I think we could probably make that open for them. But my concern is, where do the, you know, the customers for the local businesses park, if all of the side street parking is taken also? And, and the, so parking to me is part of the control. And what are they gonna have to be able to control it, so, uh, I think it's a great thing for the community. I think there's some people that really, you know, to take off and race a hundred and sixty-five miles on a bicycle have to be dedicated to the sport. And I'm assuming, which is not always a good deal, that they have contacted every governmental entity that's gonna be involved with this, but I'm only concerned about ours, as far as the parking. For our businesses also.
Do we know if we have permission from the, uh, manufacturing for their parking?
Specifically, I sure hope they do, if they're putting it on a map, giving it out to their participants, but that's something I can check with Marty, cuz they have.
Okay, there's the Northern Lights place, there's a lot of parking there, if there's permission.
They have the school parking lots identified on their map?
Yeah, the schools should have a lot, I mean, they're not even open, so.
Unless there's games or wrestling or something, yeah.
Yeah, not in July, not, I mean, it's in July.
Good work.
You said seven hundred people though?
Yeah, on bicycles. Count the people that are coming with them, just so, it was, I remember seeing it last year and thinking cuz we didn't close the street, and we didn't, I mean, like, we didn't, like.
Um, the proposal is red on Main Street, like, in front of the brewery?
Every single seven hundred participant starts there.
I believe so.
Three waves?
Three waves. Last, the last two years, they started at the Hardest Cedar Springs, and went up White Pine Trail, always Eichner. It's just, it's very hard to control White Pine Trail with that many bicycles down, it's really not safe for pedestrians, and so that one used to trail on the, the Main Street, like you to go on.
So overall, how was it for you guys?
Busy.
Going up in Macon County too, so, for the hundred and sixty-five mile one.
And, in, in your estimation, is this helpful, Sergeant, Sergeant Probst, is this helpful to close Main Street for you?
Is there a way to avoid?
We were, when race started in Hardest Cedar Springs, finish line was on First.
By the Legion.
This wasn't as safe flying those bicycles down First Street, um, they're trying to stop, because of the restaurant area.
Some of them were trying to stop before they're. And trying to get out of the parking lot?
I was there too, and I, cuz I remember coming out, and I see, uh, there's a whole bunch of bicycles going by, you know. But, okay, so how many participants were there last year-ish? How was the parking then?
A lot of the bicyclists will actually park away, so that they can warm them up by riding it down. A lot of them will park out of the ways, it's a national event, so a lot of people will come from a distance away, they advertise Cedar Springs. Bicycleists will park away, ride their bike back there.
Okay.
I'm guessing the hotel will be full, and that there will be people parking there? I mean, but people will be staying there, I don't mean like, full, like, oh, you can't, I mean, I'm guessing a lot of people will be staying at the hotel, and.
It's nowhere near the impact that my president has.
Oh, no, no, no.
There's not, they don't bring a lot of people with them to watch the race, so, a few people that, you know, there's a lot more bicyclists than our pedestrians watching.
Yeah. But it is sort of like I mean, it's, is they're going through.
Yes, yes.
I just remember seeing all these bicycles go by, now I'm.
How you know?
I understand that, I've been there with you, I've seen like that.
When they're riding that fast, that they go through, they are in helmets, they are we're gonna have to man, um, regardless of how many people we wanna man, go through, we had four people there last year, and we've.
I imagine the temperature will impact too, cuz it's in July, and if it's a seventy-five degree day? If it's a ninety-five degree day? Yeah, I know, but, I'm just saying, but, you, you don't, like, you don't know, like, it's July, it could be it could be ninety-five.
Largest portion of the race is outside of the city, other than the start and the finish. So, they'll have them chasing amongst other medical units from other areas, as far as that goes, so.
We, we may wanna actually notify some of the neighboring departments that are going through, like, Sand Lake, Spencer, because they will have calls.
Well, you hope that the, the, uh, people that are running it would, would do that, yeah.
I'm hoping they've reached out to all of them, so.
Anything else?
Cuttin' Main Street, so I can tell him, get, get the gas station's approval. Yeah.
The dentist office could be affected a little bit, but not much, cuz they can park in next to the, the church parking.
On Saturday?
I don't know.
And the mall? They with.
So, so, here's the, I guess here's the way I see it, if we send them up First Street it's opened up the mall. It's opened up the gas station, and it's opened up the dentist.
The mall will be affected by.
Well, they can come in off from, in theory, come in off from there, unless the traffic backs up at the intersection, so.
I would.
What would be your preference?
Probably First Street to Beat Street, just cuz I don't have to, then I don't have to man the intersection.
Right.
Because even though we close that area, and everyone's gas station's closed, it's gonna take more manpower to control the light.
Yes.
Traffic, that that works.
Yes.
So, please, Dan, point it's easier to pay, but for bicyclists that have to make one, two, three ninety-degree turns.
And that's by the finish line, so. That's where you're gonna be going, right?
And corners anyway. And based on their path, there isn't a lot of curves, there's a whole lot of corners, so. I don't have a problem with it. But either way.
Yeah.
I will let him know that, and then, when we have a few more details, we can bring it back.
Okay. Alright, let's move on to discussion on permitting chickens in the city limit.
Renee asked this to be put on the agenda without her tonight, I don't know, um. What I explained to her is, if, if if you want, this, this is a zoning, this is an ordinance change, so it would have to go back to planning commission. But some kinda consensus from you guys, if planning commission recommends it, they'll have a public hearing. You know, if they come up with all the guidelines and regulations, if it comes back to you, would, you know, are you in favor of it, or not in favor of it?
Saw this in my time on council, and both of them have been three to four, but they've been three to four no. Um, I also, I did not know Renee, I had someone approach me, like, and by the way, I do not wanna have chickens, just to be very clear. It's not me that wants chickens, when, cuz I brought it up the last time also. Cuz people, there's people who would like to have, and they have these cute little, like, chicken houses. They're not like what most of us would think of as a chicken coop, I mean, they're like little, they have like little windows and flower boxes, and it's quite entertaining. And people have like, four, five?
It would be great if we could think that people would care for their chickens, as well as they care for some of the dogs and the dog crap I see in people's yards, so. You know, the chickens are wonderful, it's the, it's the chicken droppings that can be a stinky
nasty.
Nest, and not everybody's gonna take care of that, it's just, if you want chickens, move to the country, they're. I'm not a fan of chickens in the city. I, they just tend to wanna let them roam, and, um, causes accidents, and, you know, it can, and things like that, I'm just not a real big fan, but, um, you know, depending on where we're at here, you know. Do we do we have a lot of people that want chickens, I, that live in the city, I don't, I don't really know. I'm not sure exactly, you know, what we should do, what do you think, Jerry?
I work on a chicken farm. There's a reason why they call chickens foul. They have a great foul smell, okay? A few chickens probably don't give off the hundreds, hundreds of chickens I was around. But the waste and stuff is nasty, and I am, I'm not for it, I mean, it's a farm animal. And I just don't see, uh, there's not many farms in the city here. And there's more care to them than what people think there is. They think they're gonna get them, it's kinda neat, we'll get the eggs, we don't have to buy the eggs. The care and maintenance of a chicken will far surpass the price you're gonna save on eggs. So, I, I'm not for it.
I would have to agree with Mr. Gross, I'm not for it in the city. I'm, I, I love chickens, but I've also took care of them, and they are a lot more work than a pet, so. I would say it's probably not best in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Marvel.
No. I, I respect the. I, uh, I'm, I, I respect the idea that people wanna raise their own food, and, but just not here, especially in the community I live in. I don't wanna see chickens run in all over the place. And then on top of that too, I think.
Chickens and dogs run around after each other.
If this already get through, I think the next day the code enforcer would be getting a lot of calls and complaints, a ton, so.
I actually am fine with it, but, um, I would think it would have to have specifics of things like no more than four. No roosters, they have to be contained, they have to have a, I mean, just like we have with bees. I see it the same way, I mean, I know people in the city in Grand Rapids that have. Like I said, these little chicken houses that are, I mean, it's like a thing, I mean, they're kinda pets. They're kinda pets for some people. I have two dogs, that's plenty, I don't need chickens, this is not about me, but I understand someone who wants that. You know, I don't, that would be my position on it, I would be fine with it if we put it in the restrictions of a small number, and they have to be. Contained, and they have to be, that would be my thing.
Well, when you go that route, there is a hard, when you get chickens, especially at a baby, you don't know if you're getting a rooster or a hen. So, I mean, I thought I was getting all hens when I got fourteen, but ended up with two roosters. Are you going to just get rid of your rooster?
Well.
Run into problems. Because it's not like they can tell you for sure this is a girl or boy.
Then we wouldn't need the noon bell or whistle anymore, we could have roosters.
Awesome.
We've got a rooster somewhere around, I hear it, I hear it.
I've heard it too.
Yeah, I know where it's at.
I have an idea.
But, um, when I was a kid, I had pet chickens, I loved them, but, uh. Not in the city, it's just, it's not gonna work, it will be all fine and dandy for a while till. Somebody's chickens out there and six inches of chicken you know what, and, and, uh, the neighbors are saying what stinks? Cause it'll happen, maybe not with everybody, but no doubt with some. Think you got your answer there, okay, thank you. All right, anything else that we need to discuss?
Don't think so.
Um, how about communications, do you have any communications we need to look at? Department reports, city manager.
Um, so Tuesday and Wednesday this week, I was in Lansing at the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference. I got a tour of the Capitol, that was amazing, and, um, I actually sat and watched the Senate go through a couple votes and stuff, so. Something I had never seen, so that was very interesting, yep, um. The conference was, um, was very informational, um, there's a lot of things going through. Bills being hunted and proposed and discussed, and, um, that affects cities, so state shared revenue is one of them, so I'll keep my eye on that, um.
What's your sense of where that's headed?
I, I think it's too soon to tell at this point, um. Prefer, if they would just get rid of the strings, I mean, that money's supposed to come back to cities, but now it's with all these strings, if we do the. EVIP report and this report and that report, well.
Not even like your opinion on, do you think it's good or bad, I'm saying, what is your sense of where they're headed?
I don't have one yet, but.
They used to be not so much those strings.
Right.
And then it became this, and then they captured all this money and didn't give it back.
Millions.
Millions.
Yep.
Um, and then they've started giving it back with all these restrictions, and I'm just curious if, like, what the, what you're. I haven't followed it closely enough to see if that's part of the laws that this new. House and Senate are trying, legislature are trying to. Change. There's been a ton of them in education that have been an absolute one eighty.
Yep.
So, I was just curious where that's.
I'll, well, I'll keep an eye on this, the ones that affect the city, so.
Hoping, and I'm sure you will, I, I'm hoping they're gonna reverse a bunch of them, but. We'll see.
Good news on the master plan, um, at the last, at the March Planning Commission meeting, uh, the Planning Commission approved for the master plan to move forward. So, we've, we've secured our city planner, Williams and Works, um, they will start doing background work, we're just gonna update it, it's not gonna be a complete rewrite. Um, so, background work, letting other communities know we're updating ours, um, probably looking at getting a citizen survey out in the mail. Um, around July, August of twenty twenty-four. So, that would be the first key piece where we get the community's input, so. That will be at the Planning Commission, uh, meeting every month.
Focus on it, to build a fire station and to build a library, so, I mean, those should probably be, you know.
So, um, the estimated timeframe is like twelve months, up to eighteen months at the most, with just an update, I'm, maybe a, you know, a year, twelve months. So, we do have twenty-five thousand in the current fiscal year budget to begin it, and then we did put some money in the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year to finish it, so. That will be a good thing, um, we did receive our annual, um. Contribution from the marijuana businesses that we have open, we received, um, just over three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, that went into the general fund. So, um, the previous manager, I think, was looking at that to match these grant applications that we had submitted and have secured some already, so. Um, it's not sitting there, looking for a place to go. Um, the seventeen North Main Street Pocket Park downtown bids are out, that bid is, that project is out for bid right now. Uh, bids are due April second, so keep your fingers crossed, we'll get some good bids on that, um. We, we told them in the bid, we want work to begin on or around May first, once they start, they have a hundred and twenty days to finish the project. So, should be completely done by Red Flannel. Yep. I have some sad news that I received today, the offer that we received on the West Street parcel has been withdrawn. So bummed, so bummed, but there'll be more.
And you know why, or?
They found the property elsewhere that, when you calculate mileage, so many semis this way, that way, back and forth, it. Made more sense to secure the other location.
There'll be more.
Yep. Soon, I'll. Meeting with, um, vendors, um, staff and I regarding security cameras. Uh, for City Hall, not, not to all be done at once, but we need to show them everywhere that we would like them, and then kind of design. Maybe a two or three-year budget to accomplish all of it. Um, City Hall, the fire station, the library, the wastewater treatment facility, and our parks, so. Um, I contacted the folks from the White Creek Flats with the good weather, I was just curious, are they ready to break ground? Um, they are still waiting for final permits from Eagle, um, they're at the final design state, so as soon as they get all their permits and stuff, we, we could see some.
Yeah, they had to resubmit those with the new, the, like, from the three to the two to go around the, I'm not speaking in complete sentences, but. They had, there was a, there was a piece of it that was determined to be wetland, and they had to go around it, so they had to change the design in the building.
As soon as they get everything secured and they, they have the green light to move forward, so. We said we would keep in touch and, you know, updates here and there, so that will be exciting to watch. Yep, that's all I have.
Um, Department of Public Works, Anya?
At this time, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We're in between snow plowing and lawn mowing.
Yeah.
Right.
For like a minute.
I was finally able to put some stats together for you for yearly totals for two thousand twenty-three. If you have any questions on those? Hey.
So, I have the numbers memorized, uh, twenty twenty-one, you had fifteen juveniles that were arrested. This, last year you had eighty-five that were arrested. Working in youth ministry and some kids in the park there, did you see a common theme with the eighty-five?
I think that total has grown so high because actually the school has kind of put a zero tolerance on vaping and stuff, so it used to be. When a child was, student was caught vaping and stuff, they use discretion and warnings and suspensions, and they kind of handle it within the school. But it's gotten so bad that they decided to do more of a zero tolerance, and these kids are getting referred to juvenile court for those types of offenses, and I believe that's why that's so high.
Estimeters type thing, okay.
Juvenile offenses, yeah.
Okay.
All the major.
Thing is the new smoking.
What about the, I mean, the total arrests literally doubled from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three?
Twenty-three, the Sheriff's Department also came to town and has a building in town, so we have a lot more officers coming to and from the city of Cedar Springs, and I. My guess would be that probably plays a role in it too, the number of traffic stops the officers are making when they're going to and from our, our new offices, probably help increase some of those totals. And then it seems like when the economy's tough and people are struggling, more criminal activity kind of starts. A barren and sugary head again, and more theft and more things going on with people, so.
You, I got one question for you, do you find there's like. Certain themes that certain, like, you know, now with, uh, you know, TikTok and all that, do you find a lot of kids in this area doing those things? Like, the smashing grabs that are going on and?
There was some things, they had some, uh, things on social media where maybe kids were vandalizing certain things in school that they saw on TikTok, or. You know, we had stolen vehicles that they saw how to steal Kia cars, and that was really rampant for a while, so it does play a little bit of role. And then I think it also kind of goes through stages of which kids are at what age, at what time, and how many of those kids are getting themselves into trouble, or people are getting themselves into trouble. Like even neighborhoods, you know, when are the new young ones turning into teenagers, how many teenagers are in that neighborhood, and. How many kids are hanging out together, and right now we have a lot of kids kind of hanging out in town together again, went through a few years where they weren't, and now we're getting to more of. These kids into that thirteen to fifteen-year-old, kind of walking around with nothing to do, but maybe get themselves in trouble, so.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, the vaping thing, so what is, what is the crime they're charged with? Is it? Is it?
Yeah, underage smoking, yeah.
I didn't, I wasn't sure, like, is that like a fine, is that?
Juvenile court, they get referred to, and what happens to them after that, I have no idea, but it's kind of all done.
Okay.
Speak, cause it's a juvenile offense, yeah.
As a teacher at a high school whose job is to tour the bathrooms during lunch, looking for fruity Pebbles mango. Um, but we haven't brought in police, like, I think we're handling it more the way.
Yep, not all schools have gone to the zero tolerance thing. It's gotten a little bad, it might have been more so in the middle school, the kids.
I just was curious if that's like an effective strategy?
Don't know, we'll see.
Don't know.
It feels, well, the vaping isn't all that new, but, and it's really insidious, like, the way that the companies are getting these kids hooked. I mean, more so than cigarettes were.
It's easy, it's easier to do, it's easier to hide.
Well, and they, they give them a, I mean, the kids have told me how they, how they get them, I guess I shouldn't probably, but. The whole, they have like five times the nicotine of a traditional cigarette. And so you get hooked really quick. I, I don't know, I feel like, I keep saying to our people, like, we need some kind of. Program that we can put these kids in to get them unhooked, I mean, they're, they get addicted fast. And I don't feel like there's, when I've asked about it, I'm told we don't have any, like, do you know, like, through the police, is there?
I, I don't know those answers, I mean, the school resource officers might have more of an idea on how they're dealing with it.
Not gonna tell, he told me that. He's gonna be like, yeah.
All right, moving on, Chief Detlaw.
Well, we, uh, got our yearly synopsis to you guys going through, um, unfortunately, I was a little distraught by our roof, so I left my copy of the report sitting on my desk.
Oh, you don't have it memorized?
There, it's, it's showing the same trend that we're having on everything, it's just an increase across the board, we're already, just in this month alone, already a seventeen percent increase. So, it's just medical's our main, you know, going through, we are a very needy community in some cases, so, now, we'll keep doing what we need to do, if there's any questions, I can help.
One Troy, and you know, I know part of the answer probably. How many of these are repeat locations?
Actually, um, it's, it's, we've gotten rid of a lot of our frequent flyers, they've moved on to different areas to go through, but.
Okay, I will take that, so, okay.
And they've just moved on to different areas, um, but, uh, we still have a lot of, you know, uh, nursing homes, they're really driving that number up a lot, and we now have three. Um, that goes through there, um, you know, the, nothing against the trailer parks, it's just a higher density, not that they have any more. Um, they're just a higher density of population, so there seems like there's more calls there, but there really isn't. It's just, it's, it's a trend across the board, everything is, and it's just, you know, and same thing, when people start having issues with. You know, money, things along those lines, you tend to need more help, and, and we'll be there to help as much as we can get through that process, so. Other than that, it's, you just gotta roll with the punches.
No, it used to be referred to as frequent flyers. Locations frequently for the same problem, and I was just wondering how that, if we're still getting them?
We, we, we always will have some when we go through that point, but, um, now it's more or less locations that we go to. More than a specific person, um, you know, we're always gonna have some people at those locations that go through that just need the help, but. It's, it's just, it's, it's definitely trending differently as far as, you know, going to a specific person that's lonely or needs to, you know, some other information, so.
And that was kind of a problem in the past, uh, some of these people just didn't have anybody else to turn to. And that's why I wanted to. Even back then, we were looking for sources to try to. Find some assistance for them, or it wasn't necessarily calling for the fire department. And it was difficult to do, so.
No matter what it is, it's serious, it doesn't make any difference.
Please. No, we did not, so, I'm just curious as how it was.
Guess, I could be wrong, but the, um, Meals on Wheel, like, we've increased our financial support as a county. For the programs like Meals on Wheels, and I think it's called Elder, Elder Care, Elder Helpers. Those programs that you can sign up for, I'm guessing, would be impactful in decreasing the people who would call because they're lonely?
I- i- it's possible, that, that's, it's a possibility, like I said, I don't, I don't know exactly how those numbers are, cause if they don't call, I don't know, you know, so. But, yeah, there are, there are some definite increases in some other areas, and there's some decreases in some other stuff that goes through, so.
Thing is, that we got our full-time person absolutely when we needed them.
Greg has done a phenomenal job in getting out in the, you know, the community, so everybody sees him and doing really well, and, and he's a very, you know. Personable person, so he, he definitely does a good job, so, and nothing but kudos for Greg. Yes, so that is one of the things that we are working on, we were promised a while ago that that would be moved up and start going through the process. Um, we have not seen that happen yet. So that is, we are diligently trying to get.
Some recognition.
To get to that point, but I'm just nervous that it's not going to come to that point.
Sure hope it will.
Are they making any headway?
Um, some electrical stuff has been done recently, but. My eyes are on it.
Eighty fifth year of the Red Flower Festival, it sure would be nice.
Think better than to produce a truck for you.
See, I'll be, I'll be on it too. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just thank you for being chief, you had big shoes to fill and we miss Marty, but you're fabulous and thank you.
Of Marty, so.
And but, thank you.
City Clerk?
Well, you guys get an election update from me, um, overall, very successful. I can tell you that I outlasted, outwitted and outsmarted this election. It was the most, most difficult election I have ever run and that has been the consensus, consensus across the state. Um, turnout wise, we were only at about sixteen percent, um, one percent of voters came out for early voting for a total of thirty voters. Um, we had eighty, or sorry, eight point six percent um A V turnout and a six point three percent in precinct turnout. Um, I have to give a huge shout out to the deputy clerk, April Deesses, and all of the election workers that we had, we had phenomenal workers. Um, we could not have done it without them and all of our new people that we hired on were amazing. Um, they really made it worthwhile to be here, um, at the end of election night, they gave nothing but praise to April and I, so. Um, it was really good to hear at the end of that long, arduous journey to hear those things from them, so very happy for that. Um, in addition to that, we had our first ever state visit from the Bureau of Elections. Um, that visit went amazingly well, um, what we passed with flying colors, didn't have any comments and whatnot, but. Um, it was good to have them come out, the workers really enjoyed having um that person from the state come out as well. They were able to ask some questions to her, um, and overall went, went very well. Um, in addition, my favorite election story, um, we had a first time voter come in and he looked at me and he goes, I think I recognize you. I said, oh, really? I said, from where? He goes, I remember you, you came into the high school and gave a presentation last year. And he goes, I remember you because I said I was gonna come and vote and he goes, and here I am. And he had brought somebody with him and I just, that was my favorite election day story, so, um, yeah. Beyond that, nominating petitions are available, we have two vacant um seats coming up in November. Uh, twenty five signatures, no more than fifty, um, all of the paperwork is available in my office, um, anytime during normal, regular business hours. Um, stop in and see me, um, those are due by April twenty third at four P M. Sorry, you guys got to hear me talk a little bit.
Can I ask a question? Do you think that the low turnout is because people did not know?
Um, we did a lot of educational pieces, so I, it's, it's not uncommon for presidential primary to have low, low turnout. Um, so I think it's more just historically, it has been a lower turnout election, not so much that people didn't know.
Surprised as a teacher who teaches this at how much, like, my students would say, can I FaceTime my mom right now? Because I don't think she knows this. And I had like multiple conversations with parents. And and I don't teach here, but it was, it was interesting to me how many people didn't seem to know. And they're like, are you sure? I'm like, positive. So I, I think there is, not that you didn't do your job, I just think it's such a new concept. I don't know, I could be wrong.
I'd love to see voter turnout higher.
But. Um, yeah.
Brandon.
Uh, so we have wrapped up our twenty twenty three tax season, with the exception, though, there are some personal property taxes out there that we're still trying to collect. Um, but most of them for real property have been turned over to the county, so we'll be getting things up and running for the twenty twenty four tax season here in the next couple of months. Um, but lately, most of my time has been spent on this packet here that you guys all have. Um, yeah, so that's good to have that all put together and be ready to share it with you all next week, so make sure you study it and come with any questions and. So, uh, yeah, so we've put a lot of work into that, so we're excited to share that with you next week. Um, outside of that, uh, not a whole lot going on, um, I did attend my first board meeting for the pool. Which is um part of our medical um benefits program through Western Michigan Health Insurance. Um, so it was good to learn about that program and see what that's all about, so kind of stepping into things little by little and learning as I go. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. The other department reports, do we? Um. Oh, how about coun- council comments, Mrs. Powell?
Well, um, I'm glad to see, uh, I've got some flowers coming up and uh just uh had uh some. Wonderful donations to the garden club, well over three hundred dollars worth, so that was good, we needed that. And um, getting ready to turn that garden on and I just can't tell you how amazing it is to be down there working on it. And people are just stopping and going on and on about how much they love that garden and. Um, it's just a wonderful thing to be down there doing that. And they think the city's doing it, but we've made it real clear, it's the garden club. So anyway, that's been a real um exciting thing to look forward to and um just everything about the snow being gone, we could get a big snow. Been here at the end of March where we had like three foot of snow, so let's cross our fingers and hope that doesn't happen again, and thank you, everybody.
Um, just a big thanks to all of our election people, that was a huge Herculean thing to make that happen. And not only did you make it happen, you made it look easy. So when I came in to vote, I was just so impressed with how happy and cheerful and welcoming and. You know, the civics teacher is super happy to see that and thank you, I know it was, like you said, just. The most nuts as far as everything that had to happen. I do have one question, how close are we to needing another precinct?
They recently changed the law to allow it up to four thousand nine hundred ninety nine, so we're at about twenty six hundred currently.
On way, great.
Clerks.
Hey, go clerks.
Not a lot to say. I'd like to welcome our new member. Voice is congenial as this, but uh what we do is, is important work and so forth. I have. Somewhat given in and I've taken out a petition to run.
Yeah.
But. I wholeheartedly would like to. Recruit others to run, it's a shame that we do not get the number of people out and running and wanting to. Provide some guidance for the city. And frequently, we get those that decide that they have a problem with what we do. Step up and take and sit in the seat, so I, and that's the same thing with any government entity, I think, so. I will run, we'll see how it goes from there, okay? Thank you for everybody, and the way the meeting has gone tonight is greatly appreciated, so.
The splinters.
I'm honored to be here, so thank you. A learning curve for me, um, I want to say thank you to city manager, Ms. Falcon, for helping me out. Helping me out, I appreciate that, and all the city clerk and everybody.
Yeah, I think it was a great meeting, I really enjoyed being here, I think, I like talking about chickens and races and whatever else we talked about. As far as the uh fire department roof goes, though, I mean. To the taxpayers, I mean, I want their dollar to go as far as it possibly can, and it irritates me that we put. Money into a really nice quality material and it wasn't installed properly. And I hope that that can be made right somehow. But I re- I don't know how, but, and I do want to say welcome. Yeah, and uh, yeah, I just, I love this town, I love, love everything, I love everything about this town. And just that small town feels just, it's, it's home to me, so just honored to serve and uh want to. Remind the sa- people in the city, I, I work for them and I'm, I'm here and I, like, email me, call me, like, whatever, so.
Thank you. Yeah. Um. Same sort of thing, um, we don't know what you want unless you tell us, right?
Mm-hmm.
So tell us, um. More than willing to talk to anybody, um, we've. Especially our city managers is a totally different. Um, manager, she's open, she doesn't know the answer to something, she'll find it. Um, she finds answers for me all the time, which is good. Um, but yeah, we're willing to listen and talk and, you know, try and make this. City even, even better to be at, you know, we can keep the down home, you know, small city feel, but, but have amenities that we can use and. Um, make things easier for our constituents. Um, but please show up and vote, my goodness, it's our, it's our right. And that's the only way you're gonna be able to. Tell anybody what you want and what you need. Um, it's, sometimes I know it feels like you wrote doesn't mean anything, but it does in the long run. Even if your, you know, your husband's voting one way and you're voting the other, still come vote, you know, it's still gonna. Mean something, so. Um, but thanks again for the staff, our staff is awesome. Um. I don't think we could do our job without you. So and thanks for the planning commission for getting the whole sign thing done and doing our heavy, heavy lifting, that's always great that they can do that for us. And. I am so looking forward to next week. Uh, for us too, if anybody doesn't know, we're doing our uh budget next week, so. Come and hear what our budget is, you know, you guys don't know what we're spending our money on and you're wondering, come out and check it out. We are adjourned eight twenty six.